Alrighty folks, I chose 6 o'clock straight up, so hopefully all are doing well. So let's call the City Council Work Session for April 20th to order. And if we could have a roll call, please, Sue.
Counselor Pirro?
He's muted.
Oh.
There he is.
He's muted, okay.
See me?
Okay, Counselor Johnson?
Don't see him.
No. Counselor Yurinil Holloman?
Here.
Counselor Martinez Plankarte? Jules?
She's muted.
Here.
Okay.
Here.
Mayor Rogers?
Present.
Counselor Bacon?
Here.
Counselor Finley?
Here.
Okay. Okay, Counselor Johnson?
I'm here.
Okay, thank you. Mayor, all present.
All right, thank you very much. All right, review of the council agenda and meeting. Anything you would like to see differently in the business session this evening? All right. Hearing none. Let's go on then to council business item 4A, the February 2020 Fund Financial Statements. Any comments or questions on the financial statements? I just have one comment. It looks that was February, so that was before things got different. So I'm sure future statements will be substantially different. All right, anything else on that? All right, moving along then, let's go on to presentations. Community Engagement Now and in the Future. I think that queues you up, Lacy.
Hey, can you all hear me? Yes. All right, so Dan, and I thought this might be a good chance for me to talk about my role as the community engagement specialist, and to talk about some other reforms we as the city have created in spite of COVID-19, and to talk about my role in the future, as well as how we would like to tackle communication efforts going forward. So first off, last week I have been in my role officially for five months as the community engagement specialist, and though I could not have predicted the amount of or how fast the communication I would need to put out would be, I will say it's been a really great learning opportunity for me. This is my first job within local government, and I'm still amazed every day at just how much work I can complete within a week. So my role up to this point, just going over a little bit of what I've done, so it's been a pretty varied role, two different city managers, you know, on different things. So so far I've done a lot of marketing for events, including the city manager meet and greet events, the State of the City, and others, as well as I've released quite a few press releases. I've reestablished the city on social media, including our Facebook and Twitter accounts, as well as I've made some general marketing materials, including for the sidewalks, that flyer that I made. I've done some work on some projects like Urban Renewal and Seek Like Fix, as well as creating some different things like the Feel Good Friday emails, which I hope that they will be back in your inboxes soon, and that open information is starting to slow down a little bit. So looking towards the future, as many of you know, I am currently in an MBA program at LeLamont University. In fact, I was supposed to be taking my accounting final tonight, but I am here presenting at this meeting and running the digital platform, so I thank you for the extra study time I get because it is now on Wednesday. So within my MBA program, I was taking a management course, and in that course, we've been talking a lot about organizations and how they're grouped, and how when you have different groups in organizations, you really need a linking mechanism in order to get information across more easily. And that's really what I see my role as in the future, is being a linking mechanism both internally, within the city, within the different departments, who you see here, and externally to all of the different groups that you'll find within the community, including small businesses, residents, neighborhoods, seniors, students, all of the above, really being that linking point of communication. So switching gears a little bit, I want to talk about the city's response thus far to the coronavirus crisis that we've been facing. So first, following an emergency management meeting that we had at the beginning of March, the city created a coronavirus disease webpage. In the month of March, this webpage was viewed over 18,000 times, and it had 6,000 unique views, and that means that over 6,000 different people visited the website at one point and saw this webpage. Only for the sake of this webpage, it mostly had just general information about the coronavirus, as well as where to find more credible information. And as more information came out, the webpage grew, so it started to have what the city was doing, what was closed down at the city, what our community partners were doing, what resources for businesses there were, and this became too cumbersome. So at the end of March, we decided to break out this webpage into three different sections. The first section was a City of Newburgh and Community Partner Updates on the coronavirus. You can see this webpage has been viewed over 5,000 times from the beginning of April to April 16th, and it has over 1,500 unique views. This page is really a resource for what has been shut down at the city, how to still access those resources, what has been shut down in the community, how to still access those resources, as well as just resources for people who need them. So as part of that, we've been really talking with our community partners weekly. We are meeting with community partners in a Zoom meeting that the mayor leads, and one of the things that we talked about in that meeting was the need for a document of local food resources. And so that's something that I've done in the past few weeks, is creating that flyer that you see on the left there, and I can share that is very popular on social media alone. Our post was shared 43 times, and it's reached over 4,000 people. So 4,000 people have now know more about where to find those resources for food. On the right, you'll just see some graphics I created to let people know that even though city halls closed, all of our, you know, capabilities are still up and running and how to access those. So we are continually updating the community and city's webpage to talk about what's happening within the community. The second webpage we created was a business resource page, and this has local, state, and national resources for businesses. So far, April, the beginning of April, it's had over 1,000 page views, with 840 unique page views. We're also updating that daily, based on new information we receive, utilizing the regional pollution team who is sending out information daily, we're updating that webpage. Along with this, we also launched a campaign around the Business Emergency Relief Grant or the FERG grant, and the Newburgh Support Local Challenge. So both of these got their own webpages about the program, and we sent out an email newsletter to Newburgh business owners with up-to-date business lessons, which provided email, so that email list ended up being over 800 people, and we created quite a few social media posts. The social media posts for the Support Local Challenge alone has over 20,700 people who've been reached by it, and it's been shared 159 times. And so that's gotten really great reach along our social media, and the webpage, which has, as I said, about the program, has over 3,000 unique views. The FERG webpage has over 580 views, and that was only open in like upfront and center on our front page for a couple of days, so I think we got good reach with that too, and that was in part due to our partnerships with the Chamber, the Downtown Solution, and Unitos. So we also have our Public Health and Safety page about COVID. We still have a resource for that, where people can find credible information, and where to go, as well as just general health information. I also want to say that because of the nature of this crisis, social media has proved to be very important. A lot of people are stuck at home, in front of their computers, looking for things to do, looking for resources. So we've seen a lot more engagement on our social media lately. We've seen a lot more likes on our social media pages. On Facebook, we've gotten over 200 new likes and followers within the last couple of months. So I think that is a good sign that we're giving people information that they think is relevant to them. On that note, I want to thank the mayor for his weekly updates that he's been doing on social media through his videos about our community partner calls. They are very popular. I've already gotten requests for them to continue even once the crisis ends. So mayor, I guess he will be continually doing new videos for people. I also want to talk about the fact that we've been doing a lot of translation, which I think is something that's been really useful. I want to thank Karen Diaz from the library, Zaira Robellas Muniz from the Newburgh municipal court, and Robin Steele from the legal department, who have been working tirelessly to translate all of our COVID information into Spanish. And good news, because we are still physical distancing and the court is not open, we are able to utilize Zara's services, so she is going to begin translating some of our more popular webpages, some of the most visited webpages from last year. So she's already translated two of our utility billing pages, and we'll continue to utilize her to do that as we're going forward. Want to thank Will too, he's helping with that project. So moving forward, the nature of this crisis is that now people are kind of sitting and waiting. New information is kind of slowly coming out, but it's not as fast as it was, and so people are kind of getting bored and looking for things to do. So we want to be a source for that as well. So I'm working with Karen Carmichael currently from the Public Works Department, who is leading a lot of our COVID response efforts and coordination to create more positive activities for people to join in. So an example of that would be that we connected with the Shaquille and Cultural Center to get out free sidewalk chalk pieces, and those are still available at Social Goods and that, and that was in support of the online Camilla Festival. So the idea was that you could draw a Camilla and then Camelia, and then share it on social media. And so unfortunately, it did rain on Saturday, which makes it a little bit more difficult to draw on a sidewalk with chalk, but that's all right. We are still recommending and supporting that people draw positive messages on the sidewalk, or their favorite animal, or really just anything to kind of brighten people's day when they go on walks. And so these kind of happier activities that we're supporting, we're going to be creating a physically distant, socially connected activity calendar. And so Karen is in the process of kind of gathering information on that, and we're going to start building that, and creating a community calendar is actually one of the goals can be a Newburgh community vision, so we're happy to kind of get that project started. So it won't only be city events on there, it'll also be events for communities that are kind of bringing people together while they are staying physically apart. I also want to give a quick shout out to the libraries, who've been doing awesome in their digital communication and engagement. They've been creating a bunch of YouTube videos, they have book reviews, they have storytimes. Last week, they launched a new series where they're doing Zoom panelists sharing their hobbies. The last week, they did bird watching, this week they're doing woodworking, which I think is one of those things that we're going to add to the kind of socially connected calendar. Changing pace a little bit, again, I want to talk about my role in the coming year. So first off, as I was saying earlier, the A Newburgh Community Vision, the first topic area of that is community engagement. So I see myself playing a large role within those goals. Just a reminder, those goals include build support networks between neighbors and within neighborhoods, promote strong relationships and networks between individuals and social service organizations in the wider community, and develop the spirit of service throughout the community. If you look through the rest of A Newburgh Community Vision, a lot of it also deals with community engagement, such as increasing community participation and improving leadership collaboration, and just a lot of items really depend on good communication and marketing and getting information out to people who need it. So that's going to be a big part in determining what I'll be doing in the coming year and the future. Along with that, we're going to be working to create a larger strategy around communication. So part of that is creating an editorial calendar, and what that would be is a kind of year lookout onto what projects the city is doing, and how we can communicate about those in different times to make sure that we're getting all of the messages across that we need to. This will go back to the linking that I was talking about earlier. It'll be working with all the different departments to ensure that we are getting all of their projects on that editorial calendar, and that we're able to communicate about each of them to the best of our abilities. Second is kind of creating some branding guidelines and some templates for the city. This will also require coordination within the city and the departments to help reestablish some systems and make them more user-friendly. There's already some departments I've been working with, such as Sue, the city reporter. We've been working on creating a new cover page for public records to make them a bit more comprehensive, a little bit easier to understand. And so along with that, it will create a stronger image for external communications that will help to create a stronger, more memorable messaging. Some people see something, they can recognize it as something from the city, rather than a bunch of different things that all look different, and you get confused who you're even supposed to go to or who it's from. This also speaks to the city council's first goal of creating a culture of customer service, because we are making it very easy to understand. So the third goal is to create more and better connections with community partners. This speaks to, I was talking about earlier too, with linking with the community. In the proposed budget, there is some money for contracted services within community engagement to take on some of the more routine and technical aspects of my job, so that I can really concentrate on making those connections with the community, kind of being the person on the ground. As we go forward, part of what we'd like to do is what we've done within this crisis, which would be kind of a convenor of communication. We want to be a center part, the city wants to be a central point of communication for Newburgh as a whole, and so really getting those connections with community partners is a large part of that. So in conclusion, I guess, I want to thank Dan for helping solidify part of what my role is. He's been really great, talking about strategizing for the future when it comes to community engagement. And to me, community engagement is really about making information easily available for those looking for it, making sure information reaches people that it needs to, and providing an opportunity for community members to connect and be a part of what makes Newburgh great. So in the coming months, I'm really going to be focusing on creating systems that give more information out to more people. And now I'd invite any questions, if anyone has them.
Lacy? I just want to tell you that you are doing such an amazing job. You have taken this position to places it's not even ever come close to, and your work is engaging, it's easy to read. I'm just, I'm really, really impressed, so thank you so much.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Anyone else? Other comments or questions for Lacy?
Sure, I'll jump in. Lacy, at the Oregon Lottery, we have a team of six different people handling everything from public records to the media, and I, I think you're doing the work of three people. Every time I turn around, there's another social media post, or release, or, you know, just different video for the mayor. I, I'm just incredibly impressed, and keep up the great work.
Thank you.
I'll jump in too. I echo what they said. Seriously, I can't believe how much easier it is to find information, how much easier it is to point people to get the information in a way that's easy to read, and the stuff coming out in Spanish makes it so much easier to get people the resources they need. And so I feel like in terms of engagement with a community, you've done the work of like 100 people in a very short time, and in particular during this time when people are accessing all the information online, it's been really easy for me to point people to where they need to go and for them to find that information that's easy, accessible, and gets what they need immediately. So thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Anyone else? All right, well, well, Lacy, let me ask you a question. In all this work and all that you are doing, is it at all fun, or is it?
Yeah, I mean, I think working in local government and working for the public is something that I've wanted to do for a while, I believe in it, and so I think getting people the resources they need is always going to be important, and so it's always nice to connect people with what they need to do. And I enjoy, you know, multiple aspects of communication. I enjoy writing and creating graphics and all that. Oh yes, it is, it is fun.
Good, good, I'm glad. Well, again, I agree, I think you're doing a fantastic job. It's great to have you, and we're very fortunate, so, so I think it's been great.
Thank you.
All right, anybody else? Any other comments or questions for Lacy? You know, I promised, I promised Dan that I was going to grill you and ask you really tough questions, but I can't come up with any, so sorry.
We'll get it next time.
Next time, next time. All right, well, Lacy, thank you so much. All right, let's move on. It looks like we've got some times, quite a bit of time still, so how's about the city managers' report, Dan?
Sure, yeah, I can jump in, and I think, for better or worse, actually probably for better, Lacy stole some of my thunder, and I appreciate the work that she's been doing. I, it's interesting, actually, like just to kind of pull up a little bit from the managers' report and maybe give a little more of an adagio to Lacy. You know, I had one brief conversation with her in preparation for the presentation she just made, and, you know, really didn't need to give her talking points or give her any more, you know, to work with. I mean, she's able to, you know, I think in that, that presentation, you see what she's able to do, she's able to have a coherent narrative, you know, understand the immediate and the long term of what we as an organization are trying to do, and I really think that that'll be a huge asset for the community as we think about, you know, trying to move into some of the long-range planning and implementation that we're going to try to do in this next year. So I'm thrilled to have Lacy, because, you know, where I came from, in the county that I came from, I was trying to do that and my job, and to have someone who, as talented as her, be able to do it is awesome, and I really appreciate it, so thank you, Lacy. So as managers' report, you know, I wanted to also say we're, or I'm going to change things up slightly, and we are going to start a monthly printed version of this, that we're going to actually not print, but produce online, post on the website, and try to provide more of an update as to what the various departments are doing as a snapshot. And so we're going to do that first one probably in the next day or two, knowing Lacy, it's probably already up. But on some level, we'll try to produce more detail, more just of a record, I guess, for the activities of the city, and I will just try to hit a few of the wave tops and really just provide a little bit of the overview, rather than going into too much depth, and I may actually even deviate from that written document from time to time when I give a report to you at a meeting. But that way, we will have a record that residents can look at and understand what the city's been up to for that month. So in general, you know, Lacy spoke to the Camelia Festival and the, you know, the sort of fun calendar, and I think she had a much better name for it, the Physically Distanced but Socially Connected Calendar. I think we need either a better acronym or a better, more concise title, but I think we'll work on that. But in any event, that's definitely something we're trying to work on as we see a little bit of stabilization in the sort of crisis mode, trying to move into community connection, and, you know, trying to think about what it's going to be like to step into the, back into the real world and out of our houses, and, you know, trying to also take advantage of the planning that we've done so far, and really move into that, that community connection. One reminder, while I'm going to do this at the top, and I might do it a little bit later, but we are seeing problems with the wastewater system in terms of flushable wipes. I think I said it last time, I'll probably say it again a few more times. We would definitely really strongly encourage people to not put anything but toilet paper down the toilet. None of the rest of the materials, especially flushable wipes, are meant for it, and flushable wipes are getting stuck in our pipes. We are starting to see that in Newburgh. Something a little less, I don't know, wastewater-y, and also paper, so don't flush these either, it's talking about the library. And the circulation so far at the library has started to level out. We're at about 6,400 checkouts, about 4,500 users, and really seeing a minimal amount of hold times. So our library staff, while they're not on site all the time, are trying to make sure that we're moving content to people, and we have a lot more e-resources and things like that. So people are, are being able to get more quickly more of the things that they want to read, which is great, especially when we're at home, since not everyone is going to watch TV. We're giving them the, some contents, and Lacy spoke to that as well, sort of virtual storytimes and some of the videos. There is also a Lego Builder Challenge with a prize drawing that I think is what advertised on the library's website. So for those, I know my kids are super into Lego Masters, those who are Lego builders, something to participate in. They're also working on a summer reading program and trying to figure out how to do that in a socially-distanced way, I guess, trying to build that competition without necessarily being able to physically hand out a book or do those kinds of things, but are looking to work with local bookstore to provide the books and resources, and trying to figure out how to make all that happen. They're also, as I think we've talked about, the Newburgh Mask Force, the library has been making masks and also making hand sanitizer from time to time and things like that, so I think with all the orders that they've either filled or are about to fill, they're at about 2,100 masks that they've made, which is amazing, and they continue to take orders, primarily they're from healthcare providers, second-tier healthcare providers that aren't necessarily getting big orders of the personal protective, and also are really more for sort of the people in those facilities, or, you know, customers, as it were, rather than the actual care providers. But great effort by the library staff, and it's, it's just such a cool thing to have them so busy and so active, supporting the community. Public Works, we've had continuation, and I think I mentioned this last time in my report, that, you know, there is this impression that we close the doors and therefore city work stopped, and obviously we've talked on an ongoing basis that that's not true, and also that there's a lot going on. Public Works really has been, engineering in particular, has been continuing to do permit reviews and inspections as needed, and continuing to move projects forward, and so there's a lot of activity that's sort of behind the scenes. Some of it's happening at home, some of it's happening here on a rotating basis, but we're still moving projects forward. Public Works in the Maintenance Division, working on that wipe problem, trying to get clean outs where we're seeing clogs, and making sure that we're keeping things moving in wastewater, wanting it to go down the pipe, not up, and continuing to help there. They have done some work in the facilities unit, working on HVAC and replacing air conditioning, doing some painting, and maintaining the grounds, so we've also done some roundabout work, landscaping, and continuing to just kind of maintain the areas around the welcome signs, all kinds of activities, so that they're trying to keep the community looking its best. Water treatment plants, the, I guess, some interesting, to me, information, given the number of people who are at home on a regular basis, that we're seeing water demand actually about average for this time of year. I would have thought it might have been a little higher than average, but it seems like generally water and wastewater are about average in terms of the... the amount of activity. And we are, one item to maybe think about is, I've had a couple of questions from our staff. We've got a giant Mount Everest pile of compost at our facility, and we're thinking about how to get rid of it. Obviously, we'd love to be able to put it in people's vehicles, but on some level, have been reluctant to encourage people to leave their houses and come pick it up. You know, I think we can probably accomplish handing it out without actually touching each other and/or breaking the physical distancing rules, but on some level also just sort of feels like an activity that falls into the stay-home category rather than encouraging people to come out to pick up compost. So in any event, I know the Public Works staff is anxious to get rid of the compost and move on the Mount Everest to people's homes, but not exactly sure how we're going to do that or when we're going to be able to do it. In IT, we're, most of their staff is working remotely and as are about half of the overall city staff, and they are seeing a big increase in our help desk tickets, about twice as many help desks as normal. And obviously, to a certain extent, it's people working from home with new equipment to them, not their normal work equipment. We're seeing an increase there. With the police activity, we've talked about this a little bit. We're seeing increased theft calls. So right now, there's been an increase in theft at retail locations. It seems like a lot of that is actually groups working together. And, you know, it seems as though, from what I'm told, there is also a link to some level of drug activity with those groups. The police are also seeing an increase in car prowl cases, so thefts from vehicles. So make sure your cars are locked and be aware. But those are the big increases right now in terms of crime. Generally speaking, I think their calls are down right now. The benefit of being down and having it be a little bit slower for the police is they are catching up on some mandatory training and have been able to do that without incurring overtime, which has been nice, and able to do firearms training and some other things while maintaining the caseload. In finance, I think we talked about, you know, the Berg program. Actually, at the meeting two weeks ago, we were talking about that, and we were about to launch it the next day. So in the course of the last two weeks, we have essentially completed the Berg program. It took us about a day to get 130-ish applications, I believe. It was right at about 130. We are able to fund 62 of the requests, and remember that those were up to $2,500 for rent or mortgage. And so we were able to exceed what we thought would be sort of the max. If everyone asked for $2,500, you know, we'd do 40. So feel good about being able to help more businesses. Obviously, we couldn't help everyone, which is not a great feeling. The benefit right now of timing is that Yan-Hill County has just launched their program, and City of Newburgh should receive 24 awards there. And they are offering a similar price or amount, $2,500 grants. They're doing a 72-hour window from today through, I guess that's probably Wednesday. And then we'll do a lottery to select the businesses who will be awarded. And they've also distributed those awards throughout the county through incorporated and unincorporated Yan-Hill. So that should provide awards for some of the folks who applied to our program and weren't able to receive funding. The Support Local Challenge, which one of Lacey's naming brainchild, that one is the program where we accept utility, accept receipts and provide a rebate on utility bills. Just saying it out loud, that's for Newburgh, sort of controlled utilities, not for PGE or other utility bills. We have gotten a lot of that questioned. So far, Matt tells me we've received $21,787 in spend in receipts, and we're able to issue $9,480 in credits. And that is about 188 people submitting those receipts, and 13 of those people donated some, or a portion or all of the receipts to a fund that we have set aside for disadvantaged and hardship ratepayer cases. And so we need to distribute that information more about how to access that funding. So that's something we'll need to get out into the public a little bit more and make sure that people understand how to access that funding. We obviously have released, you're aware, because you received a notebook, we've released our budget, our proposed budget for 2020, 2021. Tomorrow evening is the first of what I'm sure will be interesting budget committee meetings, my first time going through the budget committee process. We've scheduled to have meetings Tuesdays, 6:30 PM tomorrow, and every Tuesday until we complete the thing. So hopefully, not too many, but I think we've got about five scheduled right now. In community development, priority has continued to be helping just wrangle and manage some of the programs that are out there to support economic development, support our business, and other community segments, and trying to make sure that we provide that information out to the public through Lacey. So Doug's done a lot of coordinating resources, communication with our various community partners and the regional partners. We also kicked off the Riverfront Master Plan implementation using consulting assistance, but that really is going to be an ongoing effort, you know, our goal, obviously, to see that beautiful plan come to life and really have something amazing on the river shortly, shortly being years, I'm guessing. Doug can nod. He's probably, yes, he's nodding, years away, unfortunately. But getting started on that project is important. And so that includes coordination with the Yan-Hill County, doing comprehensive plan and zone changes, and development code updates to get that project started. Also held the third meeting of the Ad Hoc Urban Renewal Citizen Advisory Committee, which I'm sure has a better acronym than I'm guessing it does. Anyway, that meeting focused on feasibility study, financial models for the feasibility study, and trying to continue work that we started a while ago on urban renewal and be forthcoming with some recommendations there. Other activities, I think I mentioned in the last meeting that I had issued an RFP for Executive Search for the three department head-level positions that closed this afternoon, and I got eight proposals, so I need to read those. Got my work cut out for me. It's a couple hundred pages worth of thumbnails. And we'll move through that process to select a or several companies to work with based on what we see. We are also continuing to work on community vision and goals, and I didn't prime Lacey too much on her presentation there, but that's something we've talked about a few times and, you know, continues to be on my whiteboard, is trying to focus on community vision implementation. One other thing to mention, my last point, would be the Public Service Announcement of the Census and making sure that people fill out the census. It's available for the first time online. We've got about, it looks like, 56.5% of Yan-Hill County response rate, and I think Lacey's posted some information that maybe Newburgh is higher than that. So that's awesome news, but I think we want to continue to see if we can get higher. The benefit of taking the census online and taking it ahead of the folks coming out and walking the neighborhoods is that they will not walk in the neighborhood and knock on your door. And so take it online. It is at my 2020census.gov, G-O-V, and that is available, or you can have a nice conversation with somebody when they come knock on your door. And that is my report.
Dan, I have a question. Do you know if anyone's working with seniors to do the census online? I had to go to my parents' house and help them. Turning on the computer gives my father anxiety. He's in his 80s. I mean, I know there's a lot of really crafty seniors who can do it, but there's just as many who are petrified.
Yeah.
So maybe, I know now is not the time to go into senior care homes, but maybe the communicating with their staff, if, I know they're trying to stay away from their residents as well, as much as possible, but.
Yeah, we could definitely reach out. You know, I think to the extent that we can get paper for those who have computer anxiety, and, you know, it still can be mailed in, maybe a more palatable option, you know, probably better than phone, too. I would think that that would be more trusted. We'd just be touching the paper. But we can definitely reach out to the care homes and find out what might work best.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
All right, other questions or comments for Dan?
Yes, Dan, I have a question. Do you have the census information up on like the Newburgh website?
We do, yeah. There's a link on the website. And I'm looking at the talking hands and seeing Lacey nodding, but we can send you that information. We can also post it as a spotlight or whatever we call them, where the COVID information is, and essentially try to promote that more on our website.
Yeah, because Unidos has, they hired a person who's helping out with families, like Spanish-speaking families, who have questions regarding the census. And so I can send their information so they can get in contact and we can have more people fill that out.
That sounds great.
Yeah, thanks.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, anything else for Dan? All right, Dan, thank you. There's plenty going on. So that's great. All right, we've got, let's see, we've got a couple of minutes. How's about council committee reports? Anything that you guys have been doing, my guess, by video, Zoom meetings, et cetera?
So of course, I have one.
Yep, go ahead, Pat.
As Dan mentioned, the feasibility study for the Urban Renewal District, attended that meeting via Zoom and had four pages of notes about everything from proposed project list to borders to fiscal impact. So we're getting to the details of the plan, and I'm really excited about the feedback we're getting from the different taxing agencies that are involved. And overall, I think as we move forward, this would be a great tool that we could have in the future if they're, if we're going to go through some economic recovery and also help with the Riverfront Master Plan. So looking, I'm excited for it, and we're continuing to move forward and trying to figure out the best way to do public outreach in these strange times we're living in.
All right, anyone else? Let's see, I know I've got tomorrow, and I think Doug, you'll probably be on this, the workforce housing meeting, I think it's tomorrow, being led by Abishah Stone with Sedcor. I think that's tomorrow. And let's see.
I do have one thing as well. This is Elise.
Oh, there you are.
Hey, so I just, I chatted with Leslie Caldwell from Visit Newburgh, and I just wanted to call out that I do think, you know, I think everyone is taking a, you know, massive hit due to coronavirus, obviously. And I spoke with Dan about this, too, and I know you may have spoken around this, too, but just being mindful as we're going through the budget process, I really would love counselors to weigh in on just what our intent around tourism and economic development and where it overlaps as well planning for the next year.
All right, anyone else? Any, anything else? All right, I think I've got, it's just about a quarter of seven, so why don't we adjourn, and we will reconvene for the business session at 7 o'clock. And Lacey, if I remember right, you don't want us to completely sign out, just sign off your video, right?
Yeah, I think mute, mute and stop your video.
Mute and stop video, okay? All right, we'll see y'all at 7. All right, well, I've got 7 o'clock, so let's call to order a city council business session for April 20th. A roll call, please, sir.
Counselor Pirros?
Present.
Counselor Johnson?
Here.
Counselor Yarnell Holivan?
Here.
Counselor Martinez Plankarte?
Present.
Count, Mayor Rogers?
Present.
Counselor Bacon?
Here.
Counselor Finley?
Here.
Mr. Mayor, all present.
Thank you. All right, the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Ready. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
To the Republic.
For which it stands.
One nation, under God. With liberty, justice for all.
All right. Thank you. Those are some fine graphics, Lacey. Thank you. All right, let's move on then to, we did the city managers' report, for those who weren't here for the work session. We did hear from Dan earlier. So let's move on to public comments. And if I could just remind, since this is a video meeting, there, to join the teleconference's instructions on the website, if you'd like to send a comment by email, you can do so to sue.ryan@newburghoregan.gov. Anyway, same as customary, five-minute limit for your comments. And we're happy to hear from you during this time of anything that's not on the agenda. And then there, for each agenda item, there will be public comment as well. So, that having been said, Sue, do we have public comment?
Mr. Mayor, I have not received any public comment, and there are no public present in the room physically.
Okay, thank you very much. Then we will close public comments for the evening and move on to issue tracker. Dan, I suppose?
Yeah, so the issue tracker that's been shared in the agenda has three items on it. The, what we talked about last time was taking some of the items off that were underway or scheduled already. We've got the redesign of the Newburgh flag, which doesn't really have a status. The other two items do. And those are ongoing, scheduled for either May or September. And, you know, I'm sort of wanting to change up the issue tracker. I know it's already, it's a short-lived but beloved, maybe, tool. But, you know, I will say, it's a good thing to keep track of the various items that come before council and for public comment to, you know, be seen as something that is recorded and then acted on, and that there's a record to share that back to the public. And at the same point, I guess, maybe there's a different mechanism in my mind than call, maybe it's the same, but calling it the issue tracker, my concern with that is that it's essentially, and I say this respectfully, and all of those things, that it's a little bit the distraction tracker. And I say that because I think what we're doing is spending, it's a record of spending staff time on things that are not per se council or community priorities. And/or if they are, are not necessarily things that seem to be, have had enough time to see, you know, or have had enough discussion, I suppose, to be coherent yet. And so, you know, it's a great thing to gather that information. It's then another thing for us to bring it back in a way that is, you know, and I understand that's the point of the status column or having that information there. But, you know, essentially, I guess I'm concerned that we're taking staff off point from some of the work that we, I'd like them to essentially spend more time on understanding and defining actions to the council goals, how we implement those, actions to implement the community vision. You know, I think actions to implement the various plans we have would be a really useful issue tracker. You know, how, where are we on implementation? Where are we on those things, rather than recording and then sort of spending time that's valuable? Rather than recording and then sort of spending time that's valuable, staff time, on something that hasn't been sort of agreed to as a community priority. So that would be my soapbox on the issue tracker. I'm fine to go either way with it, because again, I do think that it's important that we track and communicate back on public comment and want to honor public comment in the, in the moment, but also, you know, record things that we can't answer right away and, and figure out a way to get those answers and share that. And I just sort of am feeling like it might be more helpful to have something that isn't quite structured the way that the, that the issue tracker is. I'll leave it there.
On the one regarding the, the flag, I know that Lacy mentioned branding guidelines and templates. Maybe we can toss the flag into that concept as well. And that might fit better. I think, Dan, part of it was just to make sure that when we did get public comment, that things were followed up upon was, was part of it, I think. So, but if there's another mechanism to do it, that sounds decent to me.
The mayor is really hard to hear.
Who is?
You.
Me, okay. Let me figure out why. Let's see.
I'll just say that I, I agree with what the mayor just said. I, I really don't care what mechanism it comes in. I just want to know that public comment has been followed up upon when appropriate. And then if there is something that's identified that is within our council priorities that maybe we just didn't think of, that that is looped in under, under that priority and discussed at some time.
Okay.
All right, can you hear me better now, Denise? No? Dang, what is going on here?
You might want to invest in a microphone or headset.
Maybe, if you can find them these days, right? So I, I will try to do, I'll try to sit closer.
Oh, you're doing better. Yep, it's working.
All right, I'm closer now. Maybe that'll help. All right, anything else for issue tracker or should we move on? All right, let's move on. How's about the consent calendar?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move to approve the consent calendar.
And do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, moved by Stephanie and seconded by Elise. All right, all in favor signify by saying aye. Or right hand.
Aye.
Aye.
All right, opposed, same sign. Hearing none, the consent calendar passes. All right, moving on to item seven, seven A on your agenda. This is a legislative public hearing regarding ordinance 2020-2863, an ordinance amending the Newburgh Municipal Code relating to the nomination procedure for city council. All right, so this hearing is now called to order any conflict of interest or abstention, folks. I guess, I guess potentially all of us would have a conflict of interest with the idea of a change in how city councils nominated. But beside from that, I don't know that anybody else have a conflict on this. All right, Sue, the staff report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, so I am just going to read the staff report into the record. I know you all have it, but this is primarily for the public's benefit. So, Mr. Mayor, what is being brought forward to you tonight is a change in how nominations are done for elections. I am bringing this to you under request for council action for ordinance 2020-2863. This is a change to Title II, Chapter 2.05.030 subsection B. The conduct of city elections is outlined in this chapter. The election of city officials is held at the biennial election under the condition and systems prescribed by state laws. 2020 is an election year. Districts one, three, and five on the city council will be up for election this year. The first day to file a declaration of candidacy for local offices is June 3, 2020. The city recorder generally makes information about how to file for office ahead of the opening and would like to make it available no later than May 1st. Just to be clear, I am both the city recorder and the elections officer. So yes, I am talking about myself in the third person. The current procedures in the code now allow only for nomination by petition. This requires the valid signatures of not less than 25 qualified legal voters of the city of Newburgh, Yanhill County, Oregon. There is no option to file by fee only in our code. The current procedure was established in 1996 through ordinance 962446. Current state law does not allow for electronic signatures for nomination by petition for candidates. In 2020, the World Health Organization declared a global pandemic caused by the COVID-19 coronavirus. Coronaviruses can cause respiratory disease with the potential to cause serious illness or loss of life for individuals with underlying health conditions. In March, Governor Kate Brown issued two executive orders that declared a state of emergency due to the COVID-19 outbreak in Oregon and enacted a public health law called Stay Home, Save Lives, including restrictions of limitations on individual travel, social distancing requirements, and enforcement measures for non-compliance. The public health law is in place indefinitely at this time. The city recorder recommends to the city council to make a change in the procedure for nominating candidates to allow the choice of a non-contact option. This would allow for promotion of participation in local elections in a manner that respects the health and safety of Newburgh's residents. The cost of this minor code amendment involves my staff time and less than $100 in editing services by the code publishing company. There is adequate money in my budget to cover this cost. This recommendation relates to the conduct of elections. In order to have the change in effect in time for the city recorder to open elections in June, the ordinance must be approved 30 days prior. So a simplified version of this is the more people a person comes in contact with, the higher their risk of contracting the coronavirus. My ethical background and being, I can't advocate for people to run for office with only one option. Paying a fee, and the fee is small, it's $25, and would be based on what it takes for a state candidate to run for office, is what I believe is a conceivable course for this year, given the extenuating circumstances. I have written in the ordinance that, a recommendation that it come back before you next year for review to see if you wish to make it a permanent change. And I also hope at that time to bring you a more streamlined version of the election code, which needs to be modernized and take out things like reporting by telegram. That is my staff report. Let me know if you have any questions.
Sue, I have a question.
Are away, Denise.
Yes.
This is actually less time consuming than what you used to do, right? By the time you get the signature drawn out.
Correct. So when I have to have signatures gathered, it requires someone come in, they file their declaration of candidacy, that's one form. Then they have to be, I have to verify their candidacy. Then I issue them their, their petition sheets. And then that person must go out and gather a minimum of 25 active qualified signatures. Sometimes signatures are rejected at the county level for all sorts of reasons. People have moved, people aren't actually registered to vote in that district. People aren't registered to vote and they sign a petition anyway. Or they, their signature does not match the signature on file. So 25 is the minimum number. Oftentimes, I recommend people get 50 or 75 signatures so they have enough to qualify. Then I must check those signatures to make sure they live in the district. I must check that they have lived in the district for at least three months. That's the leftover from 1948 in your code. And then those signatures go to the county to be checked that they are an active registered voter, which means they have to have voted in the last five years. So yes, to answer your question, that was a little more extensive of an answer, but it is much more time intensive for people to be nominated by petition than to pay a filing fee.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Sue?
I had one, if that's all right. So Sue, when you look at a year from now, when you're making suggestions, just as a quick glance, we were talking about census and I was looking at population numbers. If this was 96 when this was originally put in, there was about 17,000 people living here and now, you know, it's more like 24. That, that looks like a, you know, 50%, 48% increase. Do we want, maybe, when you go through that, look at the number of signatures and how we go about getting signatures and all that? Are you going to do a comprehensive review of the election?
So, yes, so these are two separate matters. The matter before you tonight is the procedure for how to nominate a candidate. The other matter is districts. So every 10 years, when the census is complete, you must redistrict if there's a shift in population between the districts. The last time the city redistricted based in on census was 2011. It takes about one year for the data to come out. Our data for, for elections purposes is the first set of data out from the federal government. It was to be out in May, but due to the delay in the finishing the census and COVID-19, it may be out a little bit later. So yes, I will be coming before you as well to talk about redistricting and what that will look like and how it will work. The Community Development Department already has a contract with the Portland State University Population Research Center. And I have been to one of the data seminars last fall, which was much more for data geeks than for city recorders. But I endured and understood what needs to happen is we will, we will contract with someone, most likely the PSU Population Center, and they will do all the number crunching. And then we'll take a look at where it is compared to how the districts are drawn today. So just a reminder, that's why when there is in, Truman, remind me if I'm wrong, I think it's the charter. That's why there's that 120 days clause in there. If a city councillor has to resign their seat, there's like the three month period to refill it. And I believe when Elizabeth resigned last year, Truman and I took a look at that. And that's to accommodate for, should you, the lines be redrawn and you effectively are kicked out of your district because you live too close to the line, then that would give the council time to adjust its membership and perhaps, you know, someone else apply for that seat. Because I don't have the data yet, I cannot give you a firm answer on how the lines will change. And my looking at the city map and keeping track of the annexations that come in and talking with Doug about the building rate, the majority of your population increase, I believe in the last 10 years, has come on the peripheral. So on the periphery of District Four has grown quite a bit. On the periphery of District Six has grown quite a bit. The Greens didn't, was not fully populated in 2010. But there might be some in, you know, in the lines that intersect in the center. So sorry, once again, that was a definitely too long of an answer, but I wanted to explain that that will also be coming before you next year.
All right, other questions for Sue? All right, hearing none, we will now open public testimony. Sue, have you received any public testimony on this item?
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, putting on my city recorder hat. I have not received any written testimony for this item and there are no members of the public here physically present to testify.
In that case, we will close public testimony on this. A recommendation from staff, Sue.
The city recorder recommends that the council approve the changes in ordinance 2020-2863 to Title II, Chapter 2.05.030 subsection B.
All right, time for council deliberation, folks. Or alternatively, a motion would be, would also work. Okay.
Do we need to waive the second reading, Truman? Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we waive the second reading. There's my motion.
Why, thank you.
You're welcome.
All you got to do is hit on mute.
Second.
There it is, Stephanie with the second. All right, any further discussion on waiving the, the second reading? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye or raising your right hand.
Aye.
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 All right, opposed, same sign. Hearing none, the waiver of the second reading passes. All right, and now another motion, if we could.
I move that we approve ordinance 2020-2863.
And read by?
And what?
Read by title only?
Read by title only.
Thank you.
Second. Second.
Denise with the second. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor?
Mr. Mayor.
You get a roll call, Truman?
We, we need the, the reading of the title followed by a roll call vote because it is an ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
May I proceed?
Please do.
Ordinance number 2020-2863, an ordinance amending the Newburgh Municipal Code relating to the nomination procedure for city council as established in Newburgh Municipal Code Section 2.05.030 subsection B.
Unmute. All right, and then Sue, a roll call vote, please.
Counselor Pirros?
Yes.
Counselor Johnson?
Yes.
Counselor Yarnell Hollivan?
Yes.
Counselor Martinez Plankarte?
Yeah.
Mayor Rogers?
Yes.
Counselor Bacon?
Yes.
Counselor Finley?
Yes.
Mayor 70, ordinance passes.
Thank you very much. All right, moving on now to new business. Item 8A, Resolution 2020-3668, adopting supplemental budget number one for fiscal year 2019-2020. I believe that is you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Just before I begin, I want to address something you said earlier, if you don't mind. Just as a shout out to our library. Library homemade masks, hand sanitizer. And we can get you that earpiece for your meetings in the future. Library will be making those here shortly, I hope. Anyways, just a shout out to the library, a little levy. So in your packet, you have before you a supplemental budget, three items covering two different funds. And those three events did not trigger a newspaper publication because it was not over a certain threshold. But we did include in the notice of this meeting that a supplemental budget would be considered. So the three items that we are requesting you entertain for a supplemental budget include a couple of items you've already talked about this evening. One being the Newburgh Emergency Relief, the Newburgh Business Emergency Relief Grant, the BURG program, which, you know, has provided assistance to businesses for these which, uh, you know, has provided assistance to businesses, uh, for lease mortgage coverage. We would like to move a hundred thousand from the general fund reserves and move that up into, uh, the general fund, uh, general government category. And you've heard the results, uh, of the response thus far, and so, uh, this will cover, uh, a hundred thousand of those, uh, those awards. The second item in the general fund is due to, uh, us saying goodbye to longtime Police Chief Brian Casey, uh, after over nearly thirty years. The reason that we are doing a supplemental budget is the, uh, it's to cover the cost associated with deployment contract, uh, which the council has already approved. And, uh, this will, uh, allow for us to, uh, fulfill the terms of that contract. And again, this is a hundred, uh, a hundred thousand that will come from the general fund reserves. Uh, and in essence, uh, that is an acceleration of what would be, uh, paid from the future funds anyways, so. In the Administrative Support Services Fund, uh, again, in response to COVID nineteen pandemic, the, uh, city established the Newburgh Support Local Challenge, and you've heard some of the results of that. We anticipate, uh, being able to, uh, fund a hundred thousand, uh, through that program. And, uh, so that, uh, the mechanism for funding that, uh, is basically an increase in the budget to the utility assistance program that the city's already got in place. Uh, the current year's budget has twenty thousand dollars and that's funded, uh, through the utility, uh, funds, water, sewer, and storm. And so, uh, in the same distribution, this hundred thousand would be coming into that line item where the existing utility assistance, uh, is paid out of, and it would be funded out of the water, wastewater and stormwater programs. The, as I mentioned in my staff report, uh, the, uh, line item in the Administrative Support Services Fund does require us to increase the budget. The transfers out of the existing, um, uh, water, sewer, and storm, uh, funds does not require supplemental budget. So, in summary, those three, those three, uh, items, uh, result in a net increase of total appropriations of a hundred thousand, uh, which would bring our total budget to, uh, uh, just over a hundred and two million. And, uh, the rest of the numbers there just balance out, uh, balance out the budget. So, request this evening is the approval of Resolution twenty twenty-three six six eight.
I mean, that's my staff report. I should have prob, uh, our, our finance director, Matt Zook, I should have properly introduced you, Mr. Zook. Any questions, folks? Alright, um, how's about a, a motion on this one? And that, before I say that, just thank you to, to all of you, Matt and Doug and Dan and everybody, that, that put this effort out there for, particularly for the business community. I, I think it's, you know, you're doing this while you're also doing, attempting to put together the budget and all, so, so thank you. Alright, any questions for Matt on this, uh, on this resolution?
Mr. Mayor?
Up there we go, Stephanie.
Thank you. I'd like to move that we adopt Resolution number twenty twenty dash three six six eight.
I second it.
Okay, Jean with a second, thank you, Jean. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by raising your right hand. Opposed, same sign. Alright, it looks like everybody's raising their hands and that Resolution twenty twenty-three six sixty-eight passes. Alright, item eight B, um, information on Newburgh Committee for Public Art, Community Development Director Doug Rux.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so, I have been having a series of conversations with Molly Olson, um, the executive director of the Newburgh Downtown Coalition about formation of an arts committee. So in your packet this evening, what you have is a series of items that identify addressing, uh, an art and an arts committee of some form. The first starts with the Newburgh Downtown Improvement Plan, where we've got celebrate art as one of the topic areas and kind of the primary purpose of that was to develop a future art walk in and around the downtown area. In addition to that, you have in your packet under one of the tables, one of the things is to form an arts committee of some force, uh, portion or type or kind, uh, to be discussed and be, uh, determined. When we did the community visioning program, um, as well, uh, art came up under cultural assets and I included in your packet knowing what the, uh, the vision and the goal is for that. Under the strategies that identified forming an ad hoc arts committee, uh, to develop a, uh, public arts program. The third one was the Riverfront Master Plan. And in your, uh, report this evening, it identifies kind of the gateway features that would lead into the riverfront area, and those gateway features are at River Street and at College Street. So there's been a coalition, um, that has been meeting between the Newburgh Downtown Coalition, the Newburgh Area Historical Society, uh, the Shaillam Cultural Center, and George Fox University. So they put together some material for you this evening, and Molly Olson will be presenting that material. There's a PowerPoint for you to go through. You also have a portion of the material in your packet. So with there, I will stop and I will turn it over to Molly.
Who has to find the unmute button? Uh, good evening, Mayor, Council, and staff. Probably inappropriate, but just a quick thank you for the programs you've done for the downtown businesses. It's a big deal, uh, in a, as much raising morale as it is the cash. So just another thank you for you, because I know it's, it's a lot of work doing this. Um, what, let me start by saying what the material you have and you're going to see is the work of a lot of people. Um, I drew the short straw, so I am presenting, but I am not the expert. So we have online the people who put quite a few weeks of work into this. I'm gonna just call out their names, but if you look on your, uh, screen, you'll see them under the public. So we have with us tonight Terry Emery, Heather Lewis, Carissa Burkett, Lonnie Parish. Diane Ragsdale also did work on this. She isn't joining us tonight, and Rachel Thomas as well. So with that, I want to, um, hop in and ask Lacey to go to the next slide. See if I can remember how to do this. There we go. So formally, our request is that city council endorse the creation of a public art steering committee. And this is described in this presentation and, and fundamentally, the document is this PowerPoint put into a document. So it's easier to read than PowerPoint. But the whole document covers proposed process for how the committee would, how you would, uh, select a committee, establish a public art plan, do fundraising, um, go through a selection process for public art, facilitating getting the projects done. And when the, uh, the art is at the end of its life cycle, they call it de-accessioning, but we might think of it as getting rid of it in its old age. Oh dear. Anyway, next slide, please. So what I have learned in this, because as I said, I'm not the expert, is that there are many people who give, uh, care a lot about public art. And in fact, they're all doing work all separately, each one, uh, learning the process, uh, through painful, um, experience. And, um, it's not very efficient or effective. So the good news is there's great support from many different, uh, areas. The bad news is, uh, lack of overall coordination and lack of understanding of the process means that projects aren't making it through and getting installed, in spite of people putting in a lot of effort. So we pulled these groups together and said, what if we created a steering committee that had the knowledge of how to run an, a public art, um, project from beginning to end? And that, that steering committee would then assist groups that wanted to do public art. So I want you to, um, differentiate between the selection of art and the actual, the whole process of getting public art in place. And by the way, just, um, break in, uh, if you have questions at any time. So next slide. I know council is very shy, so I want to encourage you. Um, the, the committee is sponsored by the nonprofits that have been active in this area. So the Shaillam Cultural Center, uh, is Carissa, the George Fox University, um, now I shall say her name wrong. Darn it, I apologize. I didn't write it down. Uh, Rachel Thomas, the Newburgh Area Historical Society, and Doug, you probably know her name. She's head of that department, and help me here if you can. Terry Emery runs the, um, art committee for the downtown coalition that has Lonnie and Heather and Carissa and others on it. And then the community leveraging the work that Doug brought up in the beginning. Doug, can you help me with her?
Gillian.
Gillian, that's it. Sorry, it was on the previous slide. Now I owe Gillian coffee. If only there were an open coffee shop. Anyway, the, the functions of the steering committee are to establish an ongoing art acquisition plan, a kind of a roadmap of how we will get public art into Newburgh. Um, seeing to the fundraising, establishing selection review committees uh, with established criteria and recruitment processes so that each project doesn't have to reinvent the process. And then guiding the program owners from idea through implementation. And then, you know, taking care over the life cycle of a piece of art so that when it's done, it can be appropriately taken care of. So next slide. So establishing a public art plan. There's a lot of work that Doug referenced that's already been done at a high level. And there's a lot of work that's happening by these different groups. And so the concept would be by pulling these people together, we'd actually put our ideas down on a roadmap and then sit down with city council in work sessions and say, these are the types of things that we're interested in pursuing. What do you think? What's your feedback? And then the steering committee would coordinate projects on a working basis with the city manager and the community development director. And this includes kind of the, the, the nuts and bolts of getting it done. So art placement, length of display, insurance, and so on. We wouldn't bother council with that because it's, it's kind of time intensive. But the proposed plans for the art plan would be worked with council. So next slide, please. So, um, drive fundraising. These are strange times to be talking about public art, but these times will change and we will get, get to a point where we can do some of this. The concept here is the steering committee was, will work to raise money for acquisition, maintenance, and care of the art. So that's a grant, that's recruitment of sponsors, that's knocking on the council's door for budget. Obviously not right now. It's also ensuring that when we do a project, we actually comprehend the life cycle costs of the project. One of the more frustrating things that people have run into is they may get the, the project, um, acquisition of the art funded, but the cost of placement or insurance or care is not comprehended. So actually looking at the whole thing and securing the, the money upfront so that we can do the whole job will be one of the responsibilities. Um, temporary art exhibits will include, uh, costs above as well as honorarium for the artist. Um, the, so the first half of this is finding the money, doing the budget right and finding the money. The second half of it is controlling the disbursement of funds. So the last two bullets are, once you've got the money, dispersment of fund will be regulated through the steering committee, um, acting on review committee recommendations for new projects so that we actually control the funds in a flow so that they, spending actually reflects the art roadmap that we worked with city council. There's a last little bit in here that if someone makes a contribution that's specifically to a program, then that money will be allocated to that program and cannot be used, uh, more generally. That's, that's more of putting brakes on, on, if you put money in a pot and then people decide that they might want to opportunistically use it. So, uh, next slide. Thank you, Lacey. Um, establishing selection review committees. So here's probably the key point of how we're organizing this is that, uh, the steering committee really is running the process, trying to make sure there's money, trying to make sure things get done. The review committees actually work the individual art projects. And the reason for this is each project is different and who you need to actually help that project succeed will be different. So if you're planning to place art in the cultural district, say at the cultural center, which would be beautiful, uh, you need to have someone who can represent that location and get you permission and make sure that it's okay with that area. Or if it's going in a neighborhood and it's going to land on someone's property. So location representatives are very important. Establish art and placement experts for the art form. So if you're doing sculpture, you want a sculpture expert. If you're doing a light display, you want a light expert. And honestly, in fairness to people like Russ Thomas and others who help out on these, we need to make sure that placement is possible and funded. Not, if, so that we don't end up with something massive that can't actually, uh, fit in the location that's, um, meant for it. And then, of course, established artists for the art form that's being proposed. And then a project, uh, content focus experts. That's actually what is the art. Um, art selection criteria will guide the review committee. It's on the next slide. Um, these are purposefully high level. And, uh, being on the art selection committee requires courage of spirit. Some things are simple, like you must have clear title. It must reflect community values, so it has to fit where you're putting it and in the neighborhoods of, of people who will be, uh, living with the art, real works. Physical suitability for display in a public setting, so nothing with, um, where someone could get hurt on it, right? Sharp edges or something like that. Uh, reasonable maintainability and ability to safely secure. So just really doing something that will make sense to have it out in public. And desired attributes are artistic excellence, a variety of media and style and techniques, um, representing artists of varying acclaim, so not just established famous artists, but also new. It should, uh, be accorded value by peers of that art and then appropriate to the site, whether, whether it's size or subject or whatever. So next slide. How do we get art? It's called accession. Very fancy, very fancy words these artists use. There are a lot of different ways, but the open competition, you do a call to artists for a specific proposal or a direct purchase when you see something that is from an artist or a gallery that's appropriate. A call to a specific set of artists for a specific proposal. And then art can also be donated by public-minded citizens. So this could be, for example, someone donates a painting and it's available to be put up in city hall. Or since everyone, no one is at city hall, perhaps it is loaned out to everyone's homes. No, no, wait. But the, I, the idea being that these are the four main methods by which people get public art. Uh, the last point here is that, um, another, uh, tripping point for projects is getting a good contract with the artist, making sure that it includes the scope of work, how payment will be done, the maximum cost, including installation cost, insurance cost, an actual catalog description and image, and then cleaning and maintenance instructions for the art. So all of that needs to be done before you sign on the dotted line. Okay, next slide. And then this is really the work of the steering committee, is, um, establishing the review committee, um, establishing the requirements for selection and placement of public art in the city. And this would be working, again, with all these different groups, including, um, uh, public works and Doug and the city manager and whoever else is appropriate at the city. And obviously, city council. Understanding the requirements for funding it, and that funding includes placement, insurance, maintenance, not just the initial purchase. And then recommendations for placement, including, uh, neighborhood outreach to ensure that there is awareness and engagement and support. And then appropriate engagement with city manager, community development for successful implementation of the program. implementation of the program. And the next slide. And then art, especially art that is outdoors ages, and there comes a time where it may be need to be removed. And so understanding this is really planning for the entire life cycle of art. If you have a permanent piece, but it's been damaged or it can't be repaired, or perhaps it's just old and no longer is desirable, you can deaccession it or get rid of it. The funds raised, if you sell the art, can be used for art projects and appropriate process has to be followed there whenever you're dealing with a public piece of art. And then again, you would you would have a review committee look at it to, so someone may propose this, we can't repair this anymore. The steering committee would establish a review committee to look at it, figure out what it would take to replace it or remove it and and how that would be done. So that's kind of that end of life. And then the next slide. So that's that's kind of the beginning, the middle, and the end. So we request of city council that you embody or embolden us to become a public art committee. So pass a resolution in support of creation of a Newburgh Public Art Committee as described and enlist the art committee's help and support in creating public art in Newburgh and engage with us for placement on city lands when when that is where the proposed place is. And lastly, we know who we know that is working on this and we've invited everyone in, but if there are other interested parties, we ask that you refer them to us so that we can actually invite them into the process. So it's it's that's the request. Questions?
Molly, Mayor?
Hi Denise.
I am so thankful to see this. People have been pushing for this for probably all of my 12 years. And it's been a long time coming and I'm glad that you all, just you and your team, picked up the the charge and pushed it forward without waiting for the city. I appreciate that so much and I am certainly excited that this is this is in front of us tonight. Thank you.
Let's echo that for what Denise said. Actually Denise, I think you and I were in a Ford family cohort many years ago that attempted to get a public art sort of process going. So this is very exciting. I'm thrilled to hear of it. So anyone else, other other comments, folks?
Yeah, this is really exciting and Molly, I actually was drafted to contact you to talk with you about coming to the cultural district board meeting. So certainly would like to to loop you into that as well. But this is really exciting and I, for one, am super excited to see some good art downtown.
All right, anyone else? All right, so Doug, will you come back to us? Sorry, go ahead.
Oh, this is Carissa, can you hear me? Hi, Molly, thank you so much. That was a great presentation. Thank you for presenting that on behalf of all of us. I'm here, I'm the art director at the cultural center and I just want to say thank you so much for considering this and I'm super excited about it. That is all I have to say. Thank you.
And I know we have Terry and Lonnie and Heather on the line as well. So this, I'm the I'm the hand puppet doing the words, but those are the guys who did most of the work, so.
Well, my thanks to all of them. Thank you, Molly.
Yep.
In fact, let's learn names again if I could. So thank you, Lonnie Parrish, Carissa Burkett, Heather Lewis, Terry Emery, Rachel Thomas, Diane Ragsdale, Gillian and Molly. So I think I think that is it. So and then Doug is the next step, will you draft the resolution for us? Will that be the next step?
If council supports this concept, I would work with Molly in the group and legal counsel to draft a form of a resolution to bring back for you for your support for this type of proposal.
Molly, did was any work being done around other cities who have this kind of good?
Yeah, so Terry did a lot of work pulling together, similar work done in Lake Oswego and Toalatin and Salem. And we had like five or six horrendous documents that she went through and edited and came up with really what I took to create this PowerPoint. So yeah, a lot of a lot of trying to understand public art and then murals are different, so we have to treat them a little differently. And what we ended up deciding was that we would work our way through that appropriately, but that what would really help would be to get this steering committee going so that we could aid people who are trying to go through it. And as we go through the process of getting public art in place, we'll actually answer all the questions that are specifics about how do you do this and work directly with Doug and the city. So, yeah.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Molly, it is awesome to hear that you're talking to other cities because I was aware of the Lake Oswego art project. I think Wilsonville had one for a while. And I knew there are other cities with different, it's always best to pull, use other people's experience. That's kind of my my mantra. So thank you for putting the work in and I completely support this. I think it'd be great. And, you know, the presentation, we saw that, you know, public, public art makes a great business and I cannot say that enough. So good job and thank you for all the hard work, everybody.
This is Gene Pyros. I also want to say thank you. There would have been a time in my life when I said, why does art need so much attention? But now I understand and I appreciate all you've done and we should all really appreciate it.
All right, well, great. Again, unless anybody else has any other comments, I'm sure we will, we will hear more. And thank you all. Thank you, thank you so much, Molly. Thank you for presenting and all the rest. Thank you, thank you so much.
Thanks, guys. Take care, stay safe.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to item 8C, information in establishing a construction excise tax. And I believe that's our community development director, Mr. Rux.
Thank you, Mayor, Doug Rux. So we spent last 14 months, 15 months, working on a construction excise tax proposal. This call came about from the the information that was brought forward to council on from housing Newburgh and was actually one of the four items that the council at the time said start working on. As I put in the report, we did the annexation R3, we did the accessory dwelling units. We've been working on the construction excise tax and with the changes in the topic we'll talk about later with the legislature and House Bill 2001 and 2003, working on that missing middle housing. So we were in front of the council back in January of 2020 and the Affordable Housing Commission had diligently and with a lot of care worked through the issues of a construction excise tax. We had conversations with the development community, we've shared that with you. But on June 6th, there were a series of questions. We brought those forward to you. From that discussion, we went back to the Affordable Housing Commission and we met with them at the end of February. It went through each of those questions that had been raised or that we needed some policy clarification or guidance on. So the Affordable Housing Commission has now in their hip pocket a recommendation to come forward to you. But the world changed. And with the coronavirus and the attention with all of those issues around it and the senior staff report with the national emergencies, the state emergencies, the emergency declaration locally, we started, I started looking at this and said, is this really the right time to bring something forward to a public hearing? We've had a series of conversations with the Home Builders Association, with Ezra Hammer. He has some ideas related to SDCs. We've talked with the Affordable Housing Commission on that. They've given me some guidance of information to bring forward to you at a time when we have a public hearing. At this time, staff's real opinion is is that we should delay having a public hearing on this particular program until the fall of 2020. That would allow some time to see where things go with the coronavirus, with the ongoing discussions about reopening Oregon and its businesses. By delaying, you will see that was in your budget that came out on Wednesday, we were estimating about $300,000 a year. If we were to delay till fall, in theory, and not start implementation of a program until January 1st of 2021, those revenues would be cut roughly in half, down to about $150,000. And I think the last piece of this is kind of getting to your council goals where it was a goal number three was promote and develop of house, of housing affordability such as housing, transitional housing and horse housing. So this construction excise tax program I've been working on, I believe directly reflects that. That's all I have.
All right, any questions for for Doug, folks? Well, Doug, you know, I certainly, although it pains me to to delay this, but I understand just one thing, and I know we we had emails back and forth from Ezra from the Home Builders Association, but that that question and about SDCs and paying it, you know, when they can be paid, maybe if that could be somewhat incorporated in this in the future, I know you already have thought about it, so.
Mayor, yes, we have. So when I was meeting with the Affordable Housing Commission, we talked about the suggestions from the Home Builders Association. And in that, one of those was looking at delaying the time when you have to pay your SDCs. And the Affordable Housing Commission agreed with that concept and they gave me some guidance. Ultimately, it's council's decision to say, don't pay them at the time of issuance of your building permit, but don't delay paying them until a final because that brings up certain potential issues. Find a point in between somewhere that that may be. So we talked about, well, is it three months before a final? Somebody brought up an idea, well, it's the time you install a water meter. So I think there's some different triggers that are there, but I have information on that to be able to bring back to council when we have a hearing. And I will continue to talk with the HBA. I talked with Ezra today as well.
Okay, great. Well, thank you. All right, any other questions or comments for Doug, folks?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
This is your city recorder. We do have a gentleman on the line that wished to comment on this item.
Very good.
Were you wanting him to speak or to have me read the letter he submitted?
Oh, okay, is that Ezra who's on the line?
Correct. Would you like to have him speak?
Sure, that'd be great.
Okay, Lacy's gonna unmute him. Mr. Miller, you have five minutes.
Hi, everyone.
Good evening, Ezra.
It's a pleasure to see all of you. I'm so glad everybody is up and running in Newburgh. Thank you all for considering this item tonight. I just want to, we submitted a letter into the record that outlines our concern with moving forward this time. We fully support the proposal that Doug Rux laid out for you. We believe it will allow for the immediate pandemic threat to pass to give us a sense of kind of where we are, what the short term impacts of the pandemic are going to be to the home building industry and ensure that the additional ideas that we laid out with regards to system development, charge, administrative reform can be considered in conjunction with this proposal. So want to thank Doug. I know he's a one man show over there doing all this hard work. We really appreciate his time and his work on this as well as the Affordable Housing Commission. And thank you all for considering his proposal to continue this conversation to the fall.
All right, Ezra, thank you, thank you very much. And, you know, one request is, is, you know, as you hear of, you sent us over something recently from Tigard and what they were doing with the water meter installation, you know, as you see different things, if you could send those along to us or continue to do that, that would be very helpful.
That would be my honor, Mayor.
Thank you, thank you very much. All right, any other public comments, Sue?
Mr. Mayor, no, we have not received any other public comment for this item, nor are there any public physically present in the room.
Okay, so Doug, at this point, you just like sort of a consensus as to that's the way you'd like us to move?
That is correct, Mayor.
Okay, so folks, give a give a head nod if you think that delaying the construction excise tax until September is the way to go. I see a bunch of nodding heads. I think we got it all. I think that's your consensus, Doug.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yep, thank you very much. All right, next, item 8D, this is the NOFA for the Newburgh Affordable Housing Trust Fund Time Sensitive Loan Grant Program. And that would be Doug again.
Thank you, Mayor. So the Affordable Housing Trust Fund and the resolution that adopted that particular program, as it's been modified, is noted in your staff report, requires that we do a notice of funding availability every year. We typically do that in the fall. And we get to council in late summer, we do the notification in the fall, we usually have the applications closing in December. The Affordable Housing Commission chose to delay that this year because they were working on the construction excise tax discussions. But we have been approached by at least one entity that was looking for some grant resources. And so in the conversation we had on February 25th with the Affordable Housing Commission, they said, well, let's move forward with the time sensitive grant and loan program. $5,000 is probably good for council members to know that in six years of doing the notice of funding availability, no one has come after a loan, but entities do like grants. So this proposal is for to go ahead and do that NOFA. And if council was to approve this, we would get something out towards the end of this week. We would notify the entity that approached us with an interest related to affordable housing to get an application. It would probably be a short two week application window period, would also get a notice into the graphic, so parties are also aware and it'll be up on our website and I can talk with Lacy about getting something pushed out on the social media as well. But it would be limited to a $5,000 maximum pot of money for grant. So in your packet is the material, some of you have seen this in past NOFAs, we kind of restructured everything. We will actually get the application form done up in a fillable PDF in the next couple of days. That's it, Mayor.
Awesome, thank you. Any questions for Doug, folks? I'm glad to hear there's some interest out there. That's good, that's encouraging, so. And let's see, what do you, do you need a motion from us or just a nod again?
A motion, and I have actually included in the RC language for a motion for one of the members to use.
Okay, awesome. If someone would be so kind?
Mayor? I'd like to make a motion that we adopt resolution number 2023669.
Second, that's Denise with the recommendation. And did I hear Patrick?
Again, yeah.
Point of order, we're on the NOFA, so the resolution is the next item. So there's a suggested motion at the top of the staff report for the NOFA. It does not have a number.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we just, I don't, I guess I don't know what to say, I can't find that that one.
You want me to do it, Denise?
Please do it, thank you.
I move approving the content of the 2019-2020 Notice of Funding Availability NOFA for the Newburgh Affordable Housing Trust Fund as shown in Attachment 1 and authorize staff to proceed with notification and publication of NOFA with a May 14th, 2020
Second, and I found it.
There you go, thank you. All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by raising your right hand and saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, the NOFA language passes. All right, moving on to resolution 20203669, a resolution supporting grant applications and authorizing the community development director to apply for DLCD 201921, planning assistance direct grants.
Thank you, Mayor, Doug Rux again. Thank you, Mayor, Doug Rux again. So, what's before you is a resolution. We have been working with the Department of Land Conservation and Development. So, as indicated in your staff report, the 2019 legislative session, there were two bills that were passed. One was HB 2001, dealing with missing middle housing. The other was HB 2003, which was addressing housing needs analysis and housing production strategies. The city and other cities around the state were invited to submit a preliminary application round to gauge the interest and what communities would be looking for in submitting for grant funds, and there are over $3 million that the legislature allocated. So, we are a city that falls over the 10,000 but under 25,000. So, back in August, I came in front of the council and we were talking about, should we apply for just funding for the duplex portion of this, or should we apply for duplexes, triplexes, quads, cluster housing, and townhouse, rowhouse? The direction you gave me at that time was, go for it all, because we're so close to the 25,000 population threshold, within a year or two, we would have to go and deal with other components of HB 2001. So, I have staff currently working on grant application forms. We would be looking to apply for code assistance, update our code, to address duplex, triplex, quads, cluster housing, and rowhouses. We would, what they call IBITR, which is, there are areas within your community that may have infrastructure issues. We could seek grant funding to hire consultants to help us evaluate that infrastructure deficiency to get lots where we might get partitions, to be able to get a duplex or a triplex or a quad on those. Another one we're looking at is our housing needs analysis. Shared with council before, we're going to be updating the buildable lands inventory and population component, so that the population number mirrors what we're doing with the economic opportunities analysis. And then, the other would be a housing production strategy. So, this is something new, they're still working through all of the administrative rule development for all of these programs. The first one on just the duplexes should be resolved here by June or so, so next month and a half. They're also working on the infrastructure, which is the IBITR program. We've been working on what a potential ask is for grant dollars. Where I'm at as of, what time is it, 8:07, our grant would probably be in a request between $100,000 to $160,000 for those programs. Thank you.
All right, any questions for Doug? Well, Doug, I'll say thank you, good luck with the grants. If you get your approval here, all the fingers will be crossed. Anyway, any other questions or comments for Doug, folks? All right, how's about a motion?
Mayor, I'll make that motion, because I have that number.
Right on.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt resolution number 2023669.
I second it.
Gene, second. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Hearing none, it looks like it passes. All right, folks, we have, amazing, we did the county so committee reports earlier. So, here at, Doug pointed out the time at 8:09, it looks like we're getting to the end of the meeting. So, unless anybody has anything else for the good of the order. All right.
Mr. Mayor, this is your city recorder, F1 item.
Yes.
We have two vacancies on the Traffic Safety Commission. So, if you know of anyone that might be interested in serving on the Traffic Safety Commission, they should fill out the application online.
Yeah, Sue, thank you for that reminder, and we'll try to get that out, make sure we get some good candidates. Again, folks, everybody be careful out there, stay healthy, don't flush the wipes in the pipes, you know, wear your mask and all that stuff, and we'll see you here, well, we'll see you here actually tomorrow at 6:30 for Budget Committee. So, there we go. So, other folks, good evening, and staff at the city of Newburgh, thank you for all you folks do, so thank you. Everybody else, stay safe, bye-bye.
Bye.
Bye, thank you.